Executive session.
I'll make it.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. An executive session, there was no votes taken and no decisions made for the record. Okay, so our next item on the agenda this evening is a adjourned public hearing for Gasland Petroleum on Route 9D. This time, I think we just need to make a, open this short discussion on that. So you have a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. At this time, we're not going to take any public comment this evening regarding the Gasland Petroleum project. It's been brought to our attention that we may have a potential conflict. And we're going to be bringing in special counsel for a future meeting. So at this time, I'd like to adjourn the public hearing until February 1st, 2021. I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'll make it. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. All right. So at this time, we're going to move on in the agenda and go on to our discussions this evening, which our first discussion will be regarding air gas, gas tank storage. We have a resolution to vote on this evening. All right. Let's state your name for the record.
Wayne Nichols, Nichols Builders, here for our gas.
Okay. All right, so obviously you've received the resolution from the planner?
Yes, we did.
Okay. We had a little discussion earlier regarding the resolution. And I believe we have just two comments that need to be added to the plan itself.
Okay.
One of which was, there was comments made by the Fire Prevention Bureau. There was one comment regarding the Fire Department allowing the Fire Chief to be able to inspect the property during normal business hours, you know, at any given time. And the second was to, the second was to have an annual operating permit as prescribed by New York State, that they would be required to do that
Correct.
on an ongoing basis while the business is in operation. Those two additions to the plan itself, I think that we're okay to vote on this resolution tonight. Correct?
Do you want to have a revision of the plan with that incorporated onto it? Or is it just safe enough?
It's going to have to be resubmitted
Okay.
for, you know, final copies to be resubmitted. So what you have currently is approved. We just need to resubmit it with those two notes on it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
But in terms of the resolution this evening, we're prepared to vote on it. And this time, I guess we'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. So we're pretty much set. It's basically balls in your court just to get that updated plan to the office so we can have that incorporated with the resolution. And then I can, you know, give the signatures.
Yeah. I'll be working on that tomorrow.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is Poughkeepsie Nissan Lot Line realignment. We have a resolution to vote on for that item this evening also. Okay. He what? Oh, okay, they're, oh, they're in the other room? Okay. All right, so let's just, we'll wait for them to come back in.
It's the, it's the lot line that sings.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
My name is Christopher Paggi, civil engineer for the applicant for the three different applications in front of the board, the Lot Line realignment and the two site plan applications, Nissan and Plimpton Hill. Do you need an overview of the plans or just a quick review of the plan changes? I know that there's.
No, I don't think we need an overview, correct? We're, we're pretty much, I mean, you did receive the resolutions from the planner.
We did.
I guess there was a revised resolution that was updated with the reversal of the lot numbers.
Yep.
Okay.
We were also just asking if one of the conditions that are noted under the site plan approval could be moved to a condition of the Lot Line realignment. And that was the provision of the easements.
It's amended as well?
Okay.
Yeah, we took care of that, yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, so that's good. All right, so we're, so we're good there. Okay. All right, so I guess we have a couple of different items here tonight. Our first one is the resolution regarding the preliminary and final subdivision flat approval. But we're voting on the preliminary, well, actually both right now. So at this point, we need a motion to approve the Poughkeepsie Nissan subdivision flat approval. So, okay, so we have the motions made. Do we have a second? Okay, second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries on the, on the approval. The other item was the actual Poughkeepsie Nissan site plan. That one there, I know we did have some discussion at the previous meeting regarding lighting. I think that they're going to be working on a lighting plan to be submitted.
Yeah, so we, the, the owner of the Nissan dealership is confident that what's existing will be able to meet current code. But they've also agreed to, we will provide a photometric plan showing existing lighting and photometrics, demonstrating that it does meet code. If it does not meet code, then the applicant is agreeing to make any necessary revisions to the lighting to make sure that he's brought within conformance.
Okay. Yeah, I, yeah, we're kind of holding off on the, we're feeling, there's some board members that are feeling a little uncomfortable with the lighting plan, that's all. Because what's there? Because I think that there was additional lighting added to that site. You know, that was added without planning board approval. And it's probably not part of the original site plan for the property. So I think that we're going to, at this point, we just want to hold off on that, the site plan approval for Poughkeepsie Nissan, until we get the actual photometric plan for that particular site. And just, you know, in terms of getting some type of conformance with it.
Okay.
Okay?
Is there anything in particular that was a concern? Just, no, like that?
It's just the lighting, the lighting levels. We need to get, you know, again, it's, it's one, it's one of those sites that just stands out on Route 9 with, you know, with an abundance of light. You know, unfortunately, at this point in time, this is when it needs to get addressed, is when it comes before the board. You know, there's been a lot of discussion on it over the last, you know, few weeks. It just needs to, we just want to make sure that we have assurances that it is going to get addressed.
And, and the assurance that it will be, would be reviewed by the town's consultants to make sure that anything submitted is in conformance with the town's code?
Right. I don't think that's, I don't think we can make it as a condition
Okay.
at this point. I think we just want to make sure that what's there is, you know, is going to meet the requirements.
Okay.
Okay?
And also that, and also that, you know, the board members have, have some input into it too, right?
Right, right, well, that's, that's bottom line. It's, the, the board has got concerns over the lighting levels. That's where it comes down to. So if we can get the lighting plan, then we can at least work on the, you know, we can at least see what we have in going forward. Because again, it's, over the last year, actually the last few years now, there's been talk about, you know, changing the code to get the lighting levels to reasonable levels. What's currently in the code doesn't address, you know, site lighting itself. It just basically address what's leaving the property.
Okay.
So.
So the, the new plan will need to?
The new, eventually, assuming, and this is, you know, something that we have to recommend to the town board.
Okay.
The town board, it's ultimately up to them to, you know, to approve it and then have it incorporated into the zoning for, you know, for future projects. But most of the projects that have come through this, this board in the last couple of years, lighting levels, I mean, I don't think that we've approved any projects that have lighting of more than, we're trying to keep it below 10-foot candles. And I know that the recommendations through, most of the lighting organizations have been saying to keep the lighting levels below, you know, five-foot candles.
Okay.
You know, and Duchess County Planning also, and our, you know, planning consultants also made those comments on a lot of site plans. So we're trying to keep everything within reason. So in terms of that one, we get the lighting plan, we can move, we can move forward there. So the third item on the agenda is the Plimpton Hills amended site plan. And that one, I believe that we've got everything worked out between the meeting at the last, after the last planning board meeting. You had met with the consultants and everything has now been, everything's been addressed. The plans have been corrected. That one, we do have a resolution. Unless you have any objections to that resolution, I believe we're, we're okay to go ahead and vote on that at this point in time. So that brings us to looking for a motion to go ahead.
Second.
Okay, so a motion to approve the Plimpton and Hills amended site plan. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. So we've run through the three items that we had on this evening. Kind of melded them all together. Is there anything that you, any other issue that you want to discuss with these?
I believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Perfect. Yeah, so I have the easement. I just need, have the proposed need, TP584.
All right.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a conceptual review of U-Haul moving and storage of Wappinger Falls.
Now we got Popeyes.
Oh, sorry, sorry, leave that up. That was, I made a mistake there. Should be wearing my glasses.
We'll help you out.
Our next item on the agenda is Popeyes Wappinger Falls Chicken LLC for amended site plan. Yeah, that, that would be fine if you put on the other sides and, so that camera there can pick it up so that it could. Okay.
The office and another employee took it to another meeting tonight. Hello, my name is Robert Grimaldi. I'm the representative, apparently by myself tonight because the Popeyes franchisee rep that was supposed to be here got quarantined over the weekend. So I didn't want him anywhere near me.
I don't blame you.
Of course, now my grunge will come out. Let me just get a few things out and I will start. Okay. Good evening. My name is Robert Grimaldi. I represent, I'm here representing the Popeyes franchisee for this location. A general overview, we're taking the existing building that's been sitting here for, what I've been told, for a while now. And we are going to be renovating it into Popeyes Chicken. The only square footage change is we're removing the existing non-ADA compatible vestibule on the building. Otherwise, we're going to keep the footprint. It's going to stay the way it is. The main structure of the building is going to remain. It's split face block with some large glue lamps and an old truss system for the roof. The truss system for the roof, we're removing. We're going to remove that and reface the entire building to meet Popeyes' new image. And I was here earlier. You guys were talking about another Popeyes. This may look different than the other Popeyes. As of this year, Popeyes Corporate has changed their prototype. And this is the first phase of it coming in. The next phase is going to be a footprint change. But the image change right now is what they've put out and are putting out on all our new builds. So this is the new look. It's incorporating brick. It's incorporating prefab panel system at the front. It's a Nietzsche panel, which is, a lot of people are more attuned to hearing the word, the Hardy panels. It's a sedimentation board that is low maintenance. The color in green are built into the product, so it's a no maintenance issue. So the materials are brick, ethos, and the Nietzsche panel that we were talking about. So the building's going to be skinned both inside and out. It's going to get taken down to the existing block and glue lamps that are there. And then I'm going to further outside to apply the new finishes on it, re-insulate the whole building, and put a whole new roof system on it. And again, from a standpoint of the building and the building footprint, we're only doing a reduction. We're reducing that side vestibule on the non, on the existing non-drive-through side of the building. And then we, of course, are changing some of the public access, the ingress and egress. They had a door right next to the drive-through, not really the safest thing, but it's what they had. It was the existing building. My guess is that this building originally was probably a Hardee's or a Roy Rogers, I'm sorry, a Geno's or a Roy Rogers back in the day. Because that's the building type that it is. I've seen a few of these.
Yeah. They had a Roy Rogers.
It was Roy Rogers, yeah. All those old Marriott buildings are, a lot of, they last. They last for a long time. And they're very similar. So that in general is what we're doing. I believe, well, I know it's supposed to be, I believe Barbara, I told them. So it came up that we had to come to the board. And I have an RA after my name, not a P. So I know there's some things I didn't get for you right now. But again,
I'm sorry.
that's because I'm an RA, not a P. We'll discuss, I have a couple of letters here. I think one of your first comments was light. Biggest thing that coming up. We were blessed to be able to get onto this board meeting, so I rushed to try to get everything. And we actually, you guys gave us a little leeway getting it here late. So we went to our vendor, the corporate vendor that does this for Popeyes, to get the photometric plan for the site plan. We did this before I, I called my franchisee to check. We don't have the right to. So my understanding is, as the franchise told me after we did this work, was that the landlord, you're renting the building and you're surrounding drive-through and what's abutting your property. We have the right to improve that. So we had done this lighting plan, which puts new lights throughout the parking lot. We're not really allowed to. And the landlord came back with, look, this is going to adjust the whole look of the whole parking lot. We're, you're talking about your one building. So I'll leave it to the board's discretion to give me some input. But we'll go back to the landlord. What we're thinking about now, what we're asking you, if this is what we should ask our landlord, is there are a lot of light poles near us. There's two in the main out, the main drive coming in. A, a three-head and a two-head in the main drive coming in from the controlled lighting. To the right of the building, there's a three-head. And then one set of parking spots away from us, there's another pair. Ignore the ones that we're proposing. Those are the existing that are there. What we'd like to go back to our landlord and say is, hey, I know we don't really, we overstepped our bounds. We don't have the rights to change these poles and put in new poles. But if it pleases the board, we'd like to go back to him and say, can we go change the heads? We'll change the heads to the one coming in and to the ones around our area. We'll make sure they meet the dark light compliance and the bug compliance. And we'll ask him if we could do that. But again, we're, we're renting our postage stamp on this letter of the site plan. We'll ask. I, I don't know, I think it's a reasonable thing. It's not going to cost him money. It's going to cost us money. So I think he's going to say yes. Now, the only thing with that is there's a whole rest of the site to the right of us. And then on the other side of the entrance, all the way over to the defunct Sonic, is a whole nother site. So we'll meet the 2,700K lighting. We'll, we'll choose to do that. But the dog, the tail can't wag the dog. I can't tell the landlord to change the whole site. We'll do what we, we could ask what we can, but my hands are kind of tied. Again, we, it was asked for as part of the condition to get here. So we did the photometric. We got it done by the vendor. And I know there was questions about including the building lighting, and we'll address that. But the first overall thing is, I, I'm at a loss and I need the board, the board's input. I, I think this is the best way I could go back to the landlord. What do you think?
Well, I mean, the question comes down to is, do we want to do the whole site? I mean, do we at least provide something regarding the whole site? Again, I don't, I don't see why the landlord wouldn't. Because, I mean, I think it's all contingent. You know, if he wants, you know, if he wants you to, he wants to lease you the space. You know, I mean, it's, the town wants that. Not that, not that we're, not that we may be forcing him to do something, but at least we want to look at overall lighting. You know, if there's areas that are too much. I mean, obviously, what was submitted, you know, those levels are high. I mean, they, they need to be.
Hundred percent.
Right, so we need to do something there. In terms of the rest of the site, I don't know, I'm not a hundred percent sure if the rest of the site is over or under. Do we want to look at that? Is that something that we need to?
I think it would hurt to look at.
Just see a plan of what's there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Before we close the door on this, I think we need to take a look at it and see if there's anything else.
Okay. If they have information, if they, you know, at least get some information regarding the lighting that's there. You know, because again, it's, you know, we fall into this where.
Looking at them?
They, yeah.
Just driving by again at the site, you know, when, when we did the site visit for the building, I wasn't, honest, I was not looking at the site lighting. Going up there again today, looking at it, driving by, I'm like, yeah, this is not the most up-to-date stuff. The, the whole site to that. But it's also not our, not my tenants.
Anything that's extremely obnoxious, then I think we should take a look into it instead of just letting it just go.
I, I understand, but I don't know what ability we're going to have to be able to change.
Can't hurt to ask.
A hundred percent. We'll, we'll ask him for the existing conditions and ask him for what he is willing to do.
Kind of take a look once we see what's there.
But I don't know if we're going to have, we don't have the ability to tell him what to do. We can ask him what to do. And we're with you with the, with the request, but.
I think the best steps forward would be to come back with the existing, the full existing site photometric plan as it exists. And then separately, show us what you're proposing. And maybe what you're proposing is just within your envelope. And maybe what you're proposing extends to the lights that you had mentioned. But for context purposes, it's, it's important for us to know what you're proposing and in what context that is. So I think a full lighting plan for the site as it exists, I mean, a full existing conditions plan for the site, including lighting. And then on a separate sheet, show us what you're proposing.
Now, if he's not open to doing this.
Whether or not he is open to changing the lighting on the full site, it is important for us to understand what you are proposing in the context of the full site.
So now let me, just, again, I'm asking.
Sure.
How, how could we be held to improving something that's not ours? That we're not leasing, we have, we have no control over, but yet this board is holding us to correct something that we have no control over.
We're not holding you to correct anything. We just, really just want to see what's there now.
Just curious.
So we have to go spend money?
So it is one site.
If the landlord doesn't have this, my tenant has to go proctor a full photometric of the entire site?
So Hannaford's was a wall bomb, and that's not that old. That whole site was done, and then they came back just a few years ago for the clink and a few other site improvements on the building. They did their signage over. And Sonic is not that old a building.
I do have the Sonic.
So that would have, Sonic and Hannaford's would basically have in contest both sides in the parking lot. So they're not that old. The problem is that we may have site plans, but like the one before us, you don't know if somebody's gone out on their own and they're in.
They've gone out and changed out the lighting. Because that's, that seems to be our biggest hurdle lately, is that we're finding out that there's been a lot of programs that have been offered to businesses, you know, for them to change out their site lighting, you know, from the old, you know, sodium vapor, you know.
Understood.
And then they turn around, they say, well, we can give you, you know, these, you know, these low amperage, you know, LED lights, and you're going to save a ton of money. And, you know, they go for, you know, the brightest package and, you know, it ends up.
They don't come back here.
Right, they, they haven't come here. They just go ahead and they do it. And, you know, now we're finding out that there's sites with, you know, excessive lighting.
Well, see now, the truth be told, I have the photometrics for Sonic.
Okay.
I, I, it's the plan that was presented here when Sonic was created. And I have an overall footprint of the site that was given to us by the landlord. But there's not an overall photometric. And the overall site plan that I have does not even indicate the poles on it. And that's why when I went back and looked at that and was trying to get the information to apply here right now, I was like, I don't see this. I, I know, I went to Google Earth, I was like, ah, I got, let me just let them do it. And that's where we got to what we submitted. But I don't have the site. So I'm not saying that he's not going to, but I, I know the pushback from my client's going to be, I have to go do the entire site right now? That's, that's a penny that he wasn't, and yeah, he's going to push back to the landlord. I know he is.
Right, that's, yeah. I think the landlord, I think the landlord would be willing to help to make it, you know, because, I mean, it's. Right, that's, yeah, I think the landlord, I think the landlord would be willing to help to make it, you know, 'cause I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be, it's tough for him too, I mean, he's got a, you know, he's gonna try to market the Sonic also, and it could be, you know, help him for a future tenant there also, if he goes ahead and, uh, decides to lease that out to somebody else with a, you know, with a different pad site, uh, for that property.
If somebody else comes in, in, in the strip mall, they would be held to this level of accountability for the whole site also?
If we, well, the problem is that we don't have a complete site plan right, we don't have a, an overall site plan right now, with a an overall lighting plan for the site.
So a tenant that would go in line?
So, let's say, right, so, you know, eventually down the road, if we turn around, we tell you, okay, well, you don't have to do it. Now, the next tenant comes in, we tell them, they don't have to do it. You know, and it keeps getting pushed along, we never get the site back into compliance again, the overall site. You know, um, that's what it comes down to. You know, the, the property owner should be willing to do it, I don't see why they wouldn't be.
Okay, so, I, and if, if inline tenant and the rest of the building would come across, they'd be held to the same standard?
If they were within the building?
In, in the strip mall behind us?
Yeah, well, if they were moving in there, they might not even come to us for, you know, for an approval. Because that, that might be just a, a change in tenants.
Change in use, right.
It'll just be a change of occupancy if they're within the strip mall.
Well, the only thing that we're doing is branding our facade.
But you've made noticeable changes, you're doing a lot of changes, whereas the most they're gonna do in the strip is change their sign.
Okay. Well, uh, we will reach out, and I'll reach out to you when I get guidance from the landlord?
Sure.
Okay.
Barbara, when they, or, um, when, when Hannafords had come in, did they change out their parking lot lights, do you remember?
I don't think they did with the clink, but when they took wall bombs down, they did a whole site-
Yeah.
Does the town have any information?
It'd be nice to find out if the, if the lights for Hannaford in front there are the same as the ones that were used for Sonic?
So, we can pull out Hannaford's site plan, and then we can pull out when they came in for the clink and had to show everything, and see if the lights equal the same, or if we see extra poles that we probably missed, if that happened, when they came in for the clink. So, we can look at and overlay that and see if it's the same.
Can you share that with us?
What?
Can you share that with us? Cause that would help.
Your landlord should have all that.
So, and the Sonic, that's not that old, we've done that, so like-
You know, sometimes it's like pulling teeth to try to, I, I'm with it. If it was, if it was easy, it'd be nice if everybody said, oh, here's everything we have.
Yeah.
But, we'll, we'll ask again. Um, so that, that was a lot of your, your professionals' comments from Dutchess County. Um, and, excuse me, I usually wear glasses, but since mask time, I try to not wear the glasses so that I could not get fogged up, so I have to switch back and forth now. Um, so, all three letters all address lighting. So, that's our stance on lighting. We'll strive for more information from the landlord, and we'll work with Barbara to try to get a better resolution. Again, my client's already willing to saying, if he lets us change heads in our immediate location, we'll do it. But we gotta see what that presents to you, and then you may say, hey, you're gonna be all twenty-seven and LED, and the rest of it is sodium or whatever it may be. You may not want us to do that, without maybe getting, somehow imploring the landlord to change everything, so, we'll have that discussion. Um, the next thing was-
Before we move fast lighting, I'm curious, on your architectural red, the red lamps along-
The red lamps are goosenecks.
Are they, are they illuminating the building?
They're illuminating the building, they're basically an eleven watt LED bulb, just washing down on the face of the building, really touch, not even touching the sidewalk. It's just washing the, uh, face of the building.
Okay.
Um, we'll discuss signage in a minute, when we get to that. Um, the, the love that chicken, not illuminated. And we'll get to that. Um, question, uh, it was your letter that was most rightfully stated, I had a plotting problem. The, uh, twenty, uh, abrevites were not shown. Cause something happened with the printing. I have one updated sheet to what you have, has today's date, revision date on it, and it does have the abrevites. Can I submit that to you now?
Okay, I, I mean, it still would need a full, you know, full revision anyway.
I mean, why don't you just go save it?
From, just from a discussion standpoint.
Yeah, yeah, but we, we, we have the, tonight we'll have, we, we could have all the discussion tonight, let's get all the items out in the air. That way, you could, right, you, you could go back and you could revise
Yep.
all the plans, you know, to make it to what, you know, to whatever discussions we're having tonight. That way, you when, you go to resubmit the next time you're here,
I'm more complete.
we're, we're almost to that point.
And, and this is just for, so you know, it's not just me saying it, it's here. And then, you can throw it away and wait for my resubmission, but can I hand this out, or? Would you rather not?
Submission should not be given out.
Yeah, it's, it's tough to, yeah, it's tough to manage.
It has to be sent before we drop you off to do the bidding.
So far, I, I just got their comments again. So, to your point, there was a printing error.
Sure.
And they were not shown, and the existing shrubs were not shown. They were on a no plot layer. They're on there now. Your comment in reference to the cardinal flowers?
The flowers, just curious about that.
They all, and I have, and I've submitted, but I have a printout of it. They come typically in a bunch.
Sure.
And so, when I'm showing that fa, that bush, that's like five actual root ends. So it's a bunch of five.
Okay.
And then, so when I show them three groups of them, that's like fifteen. And the little crypt that I have goes into the fact that, that they, uh, they're a good spreader. One of the re, so, they'll conglomerate and multiply in those spaces.
Fill that space as opposed to, yeah.
Um, the other reason that that's used, it has a splash of color.
Sure.
It's red, and it's very deer resistant. Uh, to the deer, it stinks. Uh, it doesn't taste good and it stinks to them. So that's one of the other reasons that we used it. And also, truth be told, um, we had information from the Sonic plant. It was one of them, it was one of the plants that was shown on there, so I figured it might be, have favor with the board, so that's why I showed that one.
Um, do you know how well it does in the conditions that you're proposing, in, with salt, with fumes, that kind of thing?
Um, I've asked actually one of my PE friends, and he's like, oh yeah, we've used that, we've used that all over.
Sure.
He goes, it is great for the deer, and that's why we use it in the areas of that area, and it will spread and propagate amongst itself, yet not to the point of being evasive.
Perfect. Yeah, just know with the next submission, we're gonna be, um, very careful with that criteria, just, just because it is in a traffic island.
Yep.
We're gonna look very closely at what's being proposed and how well those do in, in, uh, those kinds of urban conditions.
And I'll add the sheet that I created for today that shows, it has a graphic picture of it bunched together, and the statement about its being able to spread in place and such.
Lovely.
Fair enough. Um, that's lighting levels, that's, anything else in reference to landscape besides those that we're missing? I mean, there, there's not much, right now, it's a bunch of evergreens. Um, we have, uh, a, a stone pad in the front and a bunch of evergreens. That's it. Uh, there's not too much space for, uh, landscaping. Uh, again, we're not gonna go far away from our building, we're just surrounding our drive-through, and, you know, we've come on the front, the side, and around the back wall. The non-drive-through side, there's handicap access and access to the building. There's not room for me to even dig up, uh, the existing pervias for any other planting beds. So the areas that we could, we've, we've addressed, we've added to. If, if there's other recommendations of species or type, we're, we're good, we'll, we'll, we'll work out whatever the engineer prefers, or the board prefers, we're good with it.
Looking for something, it's just pretty much, you know, that's gonna fill it up, to fill up the, you know, the areas that can be landscaped so that we, you know-
Look, when it's just gravel-
Right, not just, yeah, not just a low ground cover, but, you know, some stuff that's gonna grow up, you know, out of the ground a little bit, you know, maybe some tall stuff in areas that, that may be okay to, um, you know, that won't block anything.
That, that abrevites grow.
Right.
Uh, this actually grows to three to four feet that we were just talking about, and it has some color to it. Otherwise, it's green, it's a perennial, it comes back. Um, so, any recommendations? There's, you're not gonna blow any budget on our landscape, there's not that much there. So, we'll, we'll definitely work out and meet whatever recommendations are requested in reference to landscaping. Um, there was this suggestion of a ramp from the sidewalk of Route Nine to be upgraded. Uh, this is from the Dutchess County.
Yeah.
Again, I don't know how much right I have to go to the public sidewalk and get to the site.
About the ADA compliance issue?
I know, but it's not my property.
Again, you have to talk to your landlord.
So, we'll, we'll talk to the landlord.
Yeah.
Um, now, I will tell you, and I don't know if you guys readily know, the site where we are, it drops off towards the back. Um, and, we're looking to position the handicap spots as on the plan towards the front, and redo the walkway, because that's also where we're removing the little vestibule. We'll do, redo the walkway from the new entrance to the handicap ramps. And I know we need to, um, provide all the construction details for that, and we will. Uh, but that's the extent of the outdoor improvement. We're removing the sidewalk on the drive-through side of the building. We're adding more landscaping, and obviously, we're adding a little sidewalk in the front to get to the front door. So it's, uh, sidewalk from the means of ingress and egress to the handicap ramp. Making sure everything's code compliant and bringing up the latest standards. And that's satisfying.
I think that was on a Dutchess County letter, right.
That, that's, Dutchess County.
Considering that comment though, that would be a great reason to have the full site, because when I read that comment, I wasn't quite sure which sidewalk they were talking about, it's not shown on these plans.
Yep.
Um, it'd be nice to have an existing conditions, just understand where this-
Well, and again, that's why we had talked about if I needed to bring a PE on immediately and shoot the whole thing, or if we could somewhat keep it general enough that just the lonely RA could take care of it.
So, when Dunkin' Donuts had come in and taken over the side across the street, there was a comment, because there's a bus stop there, and it's a bus stop, not up on Route Nine either, by you or on the other side. So they wanted a walkway from Dunkin' Donuts out to Route Nine. So, asking you to do the same thing is important to the whole site. It's very walkable.
I, I understand, but, again, without a full topographic from the site, that's gonna be tough to get that ramp down there.
Yeah, it's a county, county comment.
Yeah. Um, a- again, we'll, we'll talk to the landlord. Um, CP and L, is that it?
That'd be us, that'd be me.
That'd be our, that'd be our engineer.
So,
we wanna go, um, we wanna make sure that, you know, the grease trap is, the grease trap is properly sized, so we're asking for, uh, if you have to get like a PE, that's fine, uh, in terms of just, um, analyzing what was there before, how many, you know, seats, seats that they had, you could probably even get water use, um, records, um, since, since we had written this, um, uh, the letter, uh, one of our guys had found out that, uh, you are tied into the Village of Wappinger water system there.
Yeah, I believe that's, yeah.
So, you should be able to get water use, you know, records from them, so we're looking to see what the comparison is between, um, what was, what was there before now and what you're proposing, if you're gonna be increasing the number of seats, or if the flow's gonna increase.
Contact for village water use, uh, would be?
I don't know, you'll have to go, you'll have to go look it up, Village of Wappinger.
We'll, we'll ask them. Um, our intent is to get the existing, uh, grease trap inspected.
Is it an exterior one?
Believe so.
All right.
If it's functional. Um, now, obviously, we try to, we'd like to be able to utilize that.
Cause the sewer syst, so, I'm sorry, uh, the sewer system, the sewer system is Wappingers. So, uh, that's why, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, the grease trap is properly, um, sized, and it's got the, uh, uh, you know, the clean outs and everything on it, so.
Well, and, and we would have somebody inspect it. Now, one thing I, I can do, and you, you guys let me know if this is immediate for you, um, we could go right past that and tell you right now, if it's the board's pleasure, we'll propose an inter, a new internal one, that will meet specifications that we can submit right now. And make sure that, okay, this is what we have, which will, you know, obviously, get serviced and do everything right now. And then just call for that one to be abandoned and removed, and either sanded or removed.
Well, somebody's gotta, somebody's, somebody's gotta size it.
Oh no, in, in term, yeah, I mean, we, we put, we put-
I don't know if Wappingers has a code against, I'd have to, we'd have to talk to, I'd have to talk to Mike Tremper, our sewer operator, to see if, to see what he wants. So, I'll, I'll do that.
What's his name?
Mike Tremper. He's the, he's the town's sewer operator.
Could you spell the last name?
But we'll speak to him, uh, T-R-E-M-P-E-R. We'll ask him about that.
Should I wait for you, or should I call?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll wait for you. Okay, uh, and again, um, we'll either investigate if it's usable, serviceable, whatnot, or we'll put a new one internally, or if we prefer external, we could do it external. We usually like internal, because, number one, it forces them to maintain it and clean it, because it's in their space. Where some people, if it's outside and something happens, oh, well, it happened outside. Um, if it's inside, there's no getting around it.
Right.
If there's an issue, you have to service it immediately. Um, but, usually, and, uh, if this board doesn't, or if this board does, we'll apply and give it to you. Uh, we've had resolutions that we have to give you the records of, you know, who the outfit is that's gonna come and service it, what the maintenance records are on that, and we can turn that over.
Yeah, we'll check, we'll, we'll double check on that, and then we'll get back to you on that one.
Um, in reference to seating, now look, I don't have what was previously approved, but what I do have is a count of tables when I was there. So, estimate when I as but the location.
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I'm guessing by the number of tables, there's about sixty-plus seats in the, in the location, because there was booths and freestanding, and they're, right now, they're all pushed up in the corner. But, based upon counting seats, there was over sixty, uh, seats in the location. Um, and, there's a full set of, uh, non-compliant, uh, restrooms as far as handicap goes, but, uh, and there was a little bar area and such. So there's definitely more, we're looking at fifty-one seats, so, right off with seats, it's reduced. Um, in reference to the amount of business, sixty percent of our business goes through the drive-through, rather than the seats. And, as we all know, unfortunately, right now, a hundred percent of our business would be going through the drive-through, albeit temporary.
Right. All right, well, we'll work that out, we'll work it out.
Um, but, a- absolutely, we'll, again, no problem. Uh, it's, obviously, the client, if something's working, we'd like to use it. If it's not working, we'll replace it, and typically, we go in with a fifteen-hundred gallon unit if it's outside. If we actually use the calks, we calc in, usually somewhere between a thousand and twelve-fifty, depending on the calculations that the township asks us to use. We go in with a fifteen-hundred, because it usually meets and exceeds all requirements. So, we'll discuss it, and absolutely no problem, we'll, we'll make whatever's needed. Um, and we'll get you the construction details
Yeah.
for the curving and landscaping and such. And I agree with you, I don't think we're gonna have too much disturbance with the light.
Yeah.
Um, now Frederick Clark is, yeah, yeah, um, lighting, we discussed, landscaping, yes, the twenty abrevites were not shown, they're on there now. Um, okay, signage. Okay, signage.
Uh, before we go to signage, do you wanna talk about the dumpster?
Yeah, while we go, that might be a.
Yeah, we're not, you know, the board, uh, the board is not, is not crazy about, uh, continuing with, uh, a chain link, uh, like enclosure. I think, you, you know, we talked earlier.
For something a little more substantial.
Or something that's.
Absolutely not a problem.
A little more aesthetically pleasing?
We'll, uh, we'll bring, I mean, right now, is, you know, the build, it's the building, right immediately behind it is the cooler box, which will be a new cooler box. Same, same footprint, same location, just a new box though.
Okay.
Um, and then that steps down about thirty-six inches. And then that's where chain link dumpster area is. So, we'll build, uh, typically, and we'll.
Yeah.
Work with requests. Typically, it's a split face block colored to match the building.
That's fine.
Um, can't remember off the top of my head, it's eight or eight-six in height. Um, with gates, with, we vary between wood slats and your trest slats.
Something, something that's, right, something sturdy that's gonna, you know, that could withstand a little, a little bit of abuse.
Yeah, no. It's a steel welded sealed gate with wood, uh, slats in the front. But all split face block. Now, in this case, we're really two sides. Our third side is to the back of the building. I'm not, and I'll check, uh, but I guess we can push it up the eight inches. I'm thinking if, if we bring the wall back and, I gotta, I gotta go check my, uh, calculation, uh, my measurements. To see if I have the eight inches that I could put it on the back of the pad where the cooler box is, or if I have to go down with it. But either way, we'll surround all three sides, whether I move it up to eight inches or not.
Okay.
Not a problem. Uh, the color will be to match the building. Uh, and our building is white and gray, so we probably take the gray for the dumpster area.
Okay. I mean, yeah, there's something that's gonna go with, with the building. Um, the, the, just talking about that also, I just think about, you said a new cooler box in the back. It's, how's that gonna get finished or is that just gonna be the exposed silver?
Painted to match, but, uh, the pre-fa- uh, pre-finished aluminum, uh.
Okay, so it'll be painted to match the building itself?
Painted to match the building.
Okay. Alright, I'm curious about that. I knew that would probably come up as a question.
We'll add the dumpster into the plan, the, the built dumpster, and we'll show construction, uh, construction, uh, details for that also, which will then have your heights and everything.
Yeah, uh, one or the other, we had a, uh, one of our previous engineers, um, uh, that used to attend meetings. He, he used to like, uh, seeing bollards on the inside.
Oh, no.
So, at the back, so that way it protects the actual wall structure. So, that way if the, um, the garbage truck operator gets a little overzealous and.
Kinda drops it and lets it roll?
Yeah, and then it, it hits the wall, it'll protect, there'll be bollards in there to protect it from, from touching the walls.
Um, now, again, I have to check the dimensions, but the typical when we bring, building this freestanding, it's about twenty-four feet wide. Uh, basically like a four foot for a man, man gate, and then ten and ten. And I'm pretty sure we have about four bollards across the rear of each section. So that when those dumpsters roll, then, there'll, there'll be.
Yup, that they'll be, right.
No problem.
Protect, just to protect the structure itself, so we don't have, you know, you might not have a fence and then now you got a concrete block wall and then that starts getting hit. And now it starts falling down too.
No problem.
Okay.
We'll add that into the detail.
Alright, so.
Signage in a second, let me just write this down.
Signage is, uh, an interesting one.
Okay, um, signage is shown here, you have more details in your package. Um, so, the main front one, and I'm gonna paraphrase my square footage you have in front of you. Um, main front one is approximately thirty, I'll open it up. The main Popeyes is, uh, thirty-two point two-five square feet and Louisiana Kitchen is six point eight-two square feet. Um, the comment was referenced, I guess this, this is still in yours? Or was it in yours?
It's probably in the F D Clark.
No, it's in yours.
signage code, yeah.
Yeah, um. Such a sign cannot exceed eighty percent of the building length. Uh, the building length is approximately thirty-six feet wide, sixty, uh, eighty percent of that would be twenty-eight point eight. And our length is fourteen-four. So, we're in compliance with that. And the other calcul- calculatable was aggregate of signs shall not exceed two square feet for each linear foot of building length. Or a hundred square feet which are ever smaller. I believe that would calculate out to seventy-two square feet that we're allowed. And again, the combination of these two signs in our front is thirty-nine point seven. Now, um, beyond that, yes, we were looking to add the two, uh, as they call them, illuminated building seals. On the two sides of the building, which they are a square footage of. Why is it not telling me the square? Seven feet, I know it's seven feet. It's a thirty-six inch diameter circle and it comes up to about seven point two square feet. Oh, I'm sorry, it's right on top, seven point seven square feet.
Each one?
Each one. So, it'd be a total of fourteen. So, rounding off, we'd be right now about fifty-five square feet, adding those to the front. And then there's of course the new sign with the new look of love that chicken, uh, which is sixty-five square feet. Which if you were gonna grant us any kind of, uh, leeway with being under the seventy-two square feet, the sixty-five point forty-one. Add into the, as I just told you, the fifty, rounded up to fifty-five square feet. Would obviously take us up to a hundred and ten square feet, which would be well over the seventy-two square feet that it'd be allowed. I heard you guys talking and saying, I think you brought up an Arby's. Yes, we like to come in with the bells and whistles, obviously. Like you said, it's a good thing to ask the landlord, it's a good thing to ask you too, get some additional signage.
The love that, the love that chicken?
Yes.
I don't think it helps you, and I don't think it's pleasing, uh, to see the looks graffiti, uh, can we eliminate that?
Well, and that's what I'm saying, if you take that off, we're still well within under the seventy-two. If it pleases the board. And that would be the board's, uh, desire, we could definitely take that off the table right now. Now, there was also, and feel free, if I'm going too fast with something and you want me to push it back, push me back. Those are the buildings. Obviously now, there's menu boards. They're function, yet they're also signage, okay? I know you mentioned before, your aficionado. Look, look, look at, look at all the new McDonald's and you have to see, you have to see what's coming up. The, the world of drive-throughs post-COVID or mid-COVID. There would, I saw a KFC, I'll just make this short, KFC proposal, seven car drive-through.
Seven lanes.
Seven lane. Um, it's only about twelve hundred square feet, but there were seven lanes. Um, and it ended up three pickup positions. So, interesting stuff. We'll see what this, what happens. But yes, you could say the preview board is an advertisement, but it's so that while the car in front of you is waiting and, and ordering. You're sitting there saying, oh, yes, I do want the chicken sandwich and not the nuggets. And so that hopefully when you get to your order window, you know what you want and you move through. Um, it, it is pretty much a standard. And right now, they're pushing us to do all dual drive-throughs at every location. Because of, again, what's happening right now. So, they're gonna be hard pressed for us to come back and say, you wanna take away our preview board? Cause the preview board is something that's trying to help push these lines through. Um, obviously, if it's a condition that we have to meet, it's a condition that we have to meet. Uh, but that, that's the reason for the preview board. Um, the menu board.
You have to do is stay within the signage allowed, right?
Well.
They've got the seventy-two.
Preview board, take away whatever you want, if you gotta take something away, but.
That's reference to the building sign, the seventy-two square feet.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, I'm not sure about the directional and overall sign requirements are.
I mean, he's, and then, you know, they're talking about these two, you know, they have these two menu boards too, so. Yeah, on outside, outside, not buildings, it's not building signage, but you have two separate menu boards.
Yes, well, the, the three panel is the menu board.
Right.
The single is the preview.
Right, the preview board, okay. So, the preview board, so I mean, if it's, you know, if it's the preview board or the graffiti.
Oh, no, uh, more.
You know what I'm saying, that's, cause it was an interesting term to use, you know, I like that.
Per, uh, per. No, that's, that's exactly, you described it right.
Looks graffiti-like.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they are acrylic letters, but that's.
I understand that, but it's just, I'd rather see the red brick.
They're gone, I mean, again, as far as taking that off, that, that would be something I can abide to and commit to tonight.
It would look a lot.
Again, I forgot, is it a single?
It would also make things simpler because you can only have one sign per side. So, they would need to wave one of the two, either the building seal or the, the love that chicken or both, yeah. Something would need to be waved in order to allow two.
And that's something that, you know, we can have that discussion here and now. I mean, obviously, I need menu boards. Um, and if this board tells me, well, Robert, if you want your menu boards, this is the sign you're getting and nothing else. That's what the board tells me.
That's what it is?
Yeah. Uh, but I, I, you know, for the functionality of the drive-through, I need a menu board.
Right, which one, right, that's what we're saying, yeah, yeah.
Again, I'm just suggesting it helps the functionality, which in turn helps the traffic and everything else within it. I mean, I, I know it's a, a pre-existing drive-through, it's been there, people know it, people know how it functions.
Right.
It's up to you. I, I think it would be a benefit.
Taco Bell's got one.
Yes, but the Italian restaurant has its own.
Yeah. You gotta remember what we, uh, what we've done, um.
I mean, we don't, I don't have, the dimensions of it wasn't submitted. I do know that it's taller than I usually see.
It's probably one of the last drive-throughs we did. Right, the one, the run, the main menu board is the one that, is probably the one they really need.
It's got the full menu, yeah.
So that they're too smaller. I get what he's saying, he's, the line moving, but instead of having a huge one and a small one, reduce the huge one.
Reduce the big one.
I, I would tell you this, I could probably, I, I could tell you tonight that it would be met with, the, the thing is, if I shrink the other one, it's custom. Which means none of the graphics, none of the stuff that they send out is going to fit it. So, this one's always gonna be a problem. So, they'll probably tell me at that point, forget this, forget the preview. And just do this, because if they can't service it, it's, it's almost unusable for them.
Yeah, cause the preview is going to have less of menu items, it's got the specials, it's got the big pictures of them, right, yeah.
Um.
This is a tough, it's a, it's a tough situation too, because it's, you know, it's being placed at the front of the building. You know, it's not like, a lot, a lot, most of the fast food places have the, the menu ordering usually like to the rear, to the back of the building. You know, on, on the side at the rear or that directly in the rear of the building, and it's not in the public view. Where this one is gonna be, it's right there. I mean, you basically have four sides of a building which have public view.
Yeah.
In, in this parking lot, you know, but more so, you're at the, you know, on the main corridor, you know, Route nine. Um, you know, people, if they look down at it, they're gonna see two boards.
Well, they're gonna see something bright.
Yeah, I mean, if it's the one that's off to the side, I mean, it's, you know, kinda understandable because you're on that one side of the building.
Understood.
Yeah.
I mean, it is, in, in essence, it is a reverse drive-through. If this was, if we were building this out of the ground, that's, we'd describe this as a reverse drive-through because the drive-through's on the wrong side of the building.
Right.
It's, yeah, obviously, we're not in London, so we have to make it work this way.
Yeah.
But, um, it's, and it's an existing condition, we're not, we're not putting this here. We're dealing.
Right, dealing with what was, right, previously there.
So, I'll take it as, obviously, I think it's already a pre-gone condition, I'm coming back.
Yeah, yeah, you'll be back.
Okay. Uh, didn't need to be a mind reader for that, so, I, I'm, I shouldn't. The, the suggestion would probably be to come in with one.
One.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it would be flat with, so, yeah.
And again, since I already know I'm coming back, I have to play it back off corporate.
So, I'm looking at the building here at Wapping. And instead of putting the signs in the line, if they stack it one, two, three.
You might take them.
Sure, for one, if, why can't you put it over here so it would be facing south and not west?
We try to get it for five cars back.
I know, okay, we do it for four.
Again, it's, it's a matter of time. If you get four, your, your line could be.
This drive-through way. This year, this is the big menu board.
You're gonna end up with a slow.
That preview one is a little further back. That's what they're talking about.
It is worth mentioning, uh. It's worth mentioning that the street furniture on Route nine is pretty well screened. It's got, and it's got a full line.
It's a lot higher.
You're talking about that other board there, the, the.
No, that's not one. I know, bad example, but this to that.
Oh, let me, yeah, I didn't see it earlier, that's why.
Mr. Flowers is looking at the HVAC unit, well, not now, but before, the traffic would be looking at the HVAC units of, uh, Romanelli's.
That are on the side of the building.
I'm sorry?
You're talking about the units that are on the side of the building?
No.
Where on, uh.
You're, the, the road right now compared to the building site, then you're, that's higher.
Oh, yeah, you're higher up and you're looking at the roof.
Yeah, we're, we're cleaning that up.
We're gonna, yeah, okay, and you're gonna screen anything that's on the rooftop?
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's all, that's one of the reasons we're taking those old trucks off and redoing it in the direction.
We're making the lighting levels of the, the menu board sign and also those two, the two round signs, they're backlit, right?
That's a foot and a half plus another four.
That's all part of the.
Yeah. Right now, I think we're losing.
Yeah, okay. The two little ones you're losing.
I, I think that's, in reference to trying to play off, taking those signs off, they're gaining the menu board.
Okay.
Um, I will tell you, the menu board location is gonna, that decision, that decision's probably gonna be taken away from, um, by operations.
No.
And it was, there was a discussion earlier, we were talking about, was there a discussion about another sign out by the road?
There's a freestanding sign by the road that's being proposed to be replaced. Uh, but the only specifics that I got were that it, it would be replaced with something that size or small.
I didn't go measure it.
Yeah, we would need to know if it is, if they would need to be waved, whatever is being proposed to replace it.
What I would suggest, and this comes to all of these signs, is our signage guy, signage vendor, has to come in and file separate permits for all these signs.
But they need to be pre-approved here.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so, when I'm saying that statement, now, what, what's allowed for the pile?
The freestanding side is twenty-five feet.
Well, it's twenty-five feet, but what's unusual is that they even have a sign there. On the other side of the entrance, there is a monument sign to list all the different, uh, establishments in there. And there's also a monument sign out on Myers, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of the two monuments, the two.
It even has a sign there.
It's also designed in such a way that the front of it is. It's also designed in such a way that the front of it is quite wide, I mean, it, it goes out, it's, it's massive, I mean, it's, it's a huge sign.
So, that puts them way over the sign that's left.
Well, what's allowed?
What is measured?
Yeah, what, freestanding would be.
You don't measure that with the building.
But, I mean, it's, now we're getting too much sign footage.
That being said, yeah, I don't know what the square footage of the existing sign is, and I would imagine that it far exceeds twenty-five feet on either side. Just because, I mean, the actual body of the sign isn't that big, but it's not on a pole, it's on this massive tower.
It's on the, it's on the, it's on the monument that's there, though.
No.
No, this is separate than.
When you pull in from Route nine, the monument's on the north side.
The Italian restaurant has its own.
The Italian restaurants on, so, this sign's on the entrance, and the monument sign is on the exit side.
Why wouldn't everything just be on the monument?
I don't know, we're trying to figure out how they managed to get their own sign.
If you look at.
That could've happened, excuse me, that could've happened decades ago during Roy Rogers', and it's just continuing, you know, the codes changed over the years, and it's just.
They took the Roy Rogers' off.
Why don't we just eliminate that sign?
If, if you look at A R S two.
A R S two?
It shows it in the lower right hand, the lower left hand corner of the site.
Okay, uh, for whatever reason, I just, I drive by there all the time, I just don't remember that.
It's hollow right now. It's hollow. It, it's a pole with a.
So, it's just, it's kinda just there, alright.
So, yeah, you can miss it easily.
What do you need that for?
Why do we, yeah, why wouldn't it just be incorporated into the monument signs, the two monument signs that are already there? Well, my big, well, the, but my first, my fir-, just my first question, I'd leave it to the, um, I'll leave it to be investigated, uh, it's just that whether or not this is a legal sign. Was it, was it approved at one of the previous site plans for whoever it was? If it was, if you, I was gonna say, if you could find, possibly find something for, you know, either, you know, Roy Rogers', which was many years ago, or if, um, you know, Romanelli's had approval.
If they don't find anything, then it's an illegal sign.
No, not necessarily.
Could just pre-do.
Well, just because you don't have information on it doesn't mean it's illegal. It, it was just a Romanelli's sign that was there, and you.
But somewhere down the road.
Right.
There's hundreds of permits for this site.
Yes.
Somebody had to have taken out a sign from it, whether it was Roy Rogers', there was, I think, Little Italy move, there was a, there was a bunch of things in there over the years.
Yeah.
Somewhere that signed up for it. So, we'll have to investigate.
Yeah, so, as long, as long as it's a, as long as it's a legitimate sign.
We won't reduce it.
Right, we have, we have some documentation.
Yes.
You know, we can go from there, but if, if there's no documentation, that's, that's where it comes into question. Yeah, if it was never, if there was never any type of approval, and granted, some of the, um, you know, the old sign permits might reference back to that.
If there was a permit.
Right, right.
If there's no permit, then that thing's gotta come.
So, let me just look first before we make.
Right, before we make any decisions, we'll, we'll, we'll let you investigate and say.
Obviously, if, if Romanelli's did the right thing and came in and said they wanted their Romanelli's sign in there, their sign vendor would've.
They wouldn't have got it, if it was Romanelli's, they weren't that long ago. They, he, somebody comes in and wants a freestanding sign.
Oh, no, no, I'm saying if they refaced it.
Right.
If they refaced it, their, their sign permit would say.
Right, that's what I'm saying, somebody.
Yes.
Needs to have gotten sign from it, unfortunately, if you go back a few years, sometimes it's a pre-existing sign. I can't say that everybody's always looked to see if it was legal in the first place. You know, it says X, Y, Z now, and now I, I come in, and I come in for a permit to change it to A, B, C. The building department probably would've just given the permit, cause it's just a change of the face. You know, and that's how these things just continue from one vendor to another. So, let's see what, what we can find, do you know how big it is, or you, you're not sure?
We never measured it.
Cause you just said you're gonna make it smaller.
Well, you're saying it's twenty-five square feet, that's allowable? We would, we would sign up for making whatever is allowable, if there's any reference.
That's close to the moment, usually twenty-five square feet, so you can see the building off of Route nine.
I thought the twenty-five feet was the, for the freestanding signs, so long.
As you're saying, it's still a big sign, it's six foot four, in the middle, there's half forty feet wide.
Yeah.
So.
It's a good question as to whether or not it is necessary.
And if you do, it's twenty-five square feet, it's still pretty big.
I would say put a, put a sign on the front of the building, put the street sign in the monument with the rest of the vendors in that site.
We'll inquire if we can.
A freestanding sign at Ivall level is gonna be right next to the words on the front of the building, right? It's not gonna accomplish anything that the front of this building is not going to accomplish.
Correct, right. They'll probably see, they'll see the building before they'll see the, the sign.
Well, again, we, we just spoke about that the building's in a hole, and.
Right.
So, if we could get on the monument.
The elevation of Popeye's will be at the same height of, as Route nine, so you can see it.
If we could get it, uh, if we could get on the monument, that'll, you know, the client's not gonna wanna say, I give up all rights to have a sign. Obviously, if it's illegal, it's illegal, but if we have something out there, I'm sure he's gonna wanna have some presence on the street.
Okay, well, let's see, let, let's do the investigation and see what we can find, and then we can move forward from there.
Hey. Okay, um, I'm just making sure I got the rest of Mr. Simpson's comments in one fashion or another. Landscaping, lighting, signage.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the overall lighting plan will include, will include some, you'll have some, some of the lighting from the signs will also be picked up in that lighting.
Uh, look, the, the lighting from the sign, um, just. In an offset. Old days, these, these were big, big lights and everything else. The lighting for the signs now is basically, um, uh, those tape strips, uh.
Well, no, we bent out to different sites, and we've looked at all these signs, and some of them are notches. But we don't wanna have the same problem.
Yeah.
We.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, it's just basically need enough lighting to light it up, but not enough to project light, that's what we're looking at.
It, it's not that much, it's, uh, and, and again.
We've been told that before.
No, no, uh, we, we'll get, we'll get this stuff incorporated into, we'll have the statements from the manufacturers of, uh, the signs, of what their foot candle output is, and obviously, the bigger question of the overall site, we'll, uh, engage with the landlord, and again, we, we, the tail doesn't have that mic right to push the dog, but we'll, uh, ask as much as we can. Just as I said, we ask for signage, we're getting pushed back. We'll ask the landlord for, uh, his lighting information, and hopefully, he lets us know. Um, if I could do a little recap, because again, I know I'm coming back, but just so I make sure I get.
That's fine, if you want a recap, just make sure you got everything covered.
Um.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
So. Pete, you're gonna let us know in reference to sewage?
Yep, grease trap, yeah.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I just realized I may not have been on this mic that much. Um, I'm getting that from you. We're okay, I gotta get you stuff, you have to get me nothing.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yes. Um, we're gonna investigate, uh, legalities of existing signage.
And the lighting for the site.
And if you have any historical information for it, okay. Put that next to Barbara's notes here. Again, I do have, um, historical information from Sonic. I had a footprint of Applebee's, uh, not that's worth anything, but I had some information for Sonic, the, including the, um, photo metrics for that.
So, you'd have the, the north side, let me see what I.
Ju-, well, I wouldn't even say the north side.
Well, that's Sonic.
Just, just the Sonic pad, because once it goes like past that one parking spot, parking row in front of them, then there's a big barren wasteland between that and the entrance to us. Um. Sight lighting and signage.
Do they even have Applebee's?
Why, yeah, that was.
I think the Applebee's was, so, if this is the Sonic, and there's the patio, there's the one set of head and parking, and then it's the one parking bay to ask that.
I don't have.
And then, from that to the entrance is all, I don't have. Again, that's from memory, so, yes, if you find something, and again, we'll also ask the landlord. Um. I guess I'll go back and forth with Barbara, as far as what I get, information I get from the landlord as to where he's gonna be. Obviously, we need to make our own decision about how we're gonna come back here, but I'm sure my land, my clients not gonna wanna have to go do a full survey of the entire property, um, for our postage stamp in the middle of it. But we'll, we'll work, try to work that out, and we'll try to get you what you need. Again, he's willing to pay to change the heads and stuff by us, because it benefits us too, so, but we're.
See what the, to try to work with the landlord and see what comes back, you know, what his responses to it.
Our work would be, and Barbara, as far as timing to get you your proofs that you need, and I'm sure we'll work out the same number of things, and we'll work out timing to get on the board. Now, can I ask a question? Is there any ability for us to get the actual building to start doing that building reveal?
Well, it's kinda all tied together at this point, so, we're, I think you need to get us, I think you need to get, we need to get the site plan approved in order for you to move forward with a, to go to the building department, get a building permit.
Understood, but we're, we're not gonna let the project die, we're, we, we're invested into it.
I understand that, yeah.
And with, just so that, once this gets, we work through these hurdles, that then we could go right into, you know, hopefully, the permit will be waiting there for us, you know, with maybe some alterations, but, uh, again, I'm asking.
I have to be clear, they're not going to accept a building permit application with plans until the resolution and maps are signed. The building department is so busy, they're not gonna, I'm being honest.
No, 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 that, that's why I'm asking.
Of it being ready to go.
That, that's why I'm asking, sometimes they'll let it, but again, if you, if you don't ask, you don't get. Okay. Um, so, I guess I need to request to carry this until.
No, there's no, I don't think you need to, there's no request at this point, we're just, we'll be awaiting, um, your resubmit.
Okay, so, no legal things that we have.
There's nothing legally that we have to do at this point, no, no. We, what we need to do is we're, we're gonna be waiting upon your resubmit of the, um, you know, the drawings and the, and all the items we discussed tonight. Um, probably, you know, responses to the, you know, to the planner and the engineer.
Does require a public attorney?
Put that all together, resubmit to, to be our secretary, and then she will let you know when you can get on the next agenda at that point.
I mean, not that, not that we're ready for that yet, but.
Is there anything else that wasn't in the letters that we didn't touch on? You'd rather see it painted purple?
Well, I ain't gonna happen, but.
Yeah, I, I don't.
But we're here, so, I mean, something that.
Right, 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 right. I mean, I don't know, I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't have any, I don't know if any, if anybody else has any problems with the colors, but, you know, I'm only one person, but the, um, I mean, the colors are fine, I mean, obviously, the, the change in the dumpster enclosures around the back.
For Seeker, this is a tight, tight two act.
Just, you know, they, you know, they, they have a similar, they have a similar, um, they have a store up in Poughkeepsie.
Bright yellow.
Yeah, yeah, it's bright yellow, it's also a mess, it's a mess in the back of it, let's put it that way.
Um, I will check.
Yeah.
I wanna tell you, I'm not sure if it's the same franchisee.
Okay. If it's, if it's not the same one, if it is.
Because, uh, uh, actually, their, their territory and how they do is, is bizarre to me compared to all the other franchisees that I've worked with. You could be two different franchisees right down the street from each other.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just, I just, I know that there's issues in Poughkeepsie, um, with the, the zoning department. Um, they've looked at, you know, there's people that have looked at the site before, and just as long as the operator's gonna take care of this one, uh, because again, he's in the, you know, he's in the fishbowl, because he's, he's got everything around him, you know, he's got the, the main road, um, you know, and he's got a parking lot with all these other stores around him. Um, it ju-, it would look unsightly if things got out of control and things being left outside, and.
Not a good neighborhood anymore.
Plan on, if there's any plan to do that, he may wanna think about, you know, some type of an enclosure, if he needs to have some type of, you know, additional area to store something or leave it out the back for some reason.
Yeah, if, if we're going to block in what's chain-linked right now.
Hmm, yeah. As long as he can fit it all within his enclosure, that's all that matters.
That's gonna be more than, uh, more than what's needed for the property. Um, actually, let me just look at one thing.
Well, you're looking, when you submit, resubmit elevations of the building, include the dumpster.
Yes.
And so that we can see what it looks like from that side as well.
Absolutely, uh, including that. The only, uh, the only other thing that is technically outside, um, they put outside, which would be alongside the dumpster right here, so you have the, um, it's, it's shown on the A R S one plan. Um, you have the cooler, and then there's a square, a rectangle, and a circle. The square is the existing, uh, electrical transformer that's on site. The circle, which unfortunately, I've shown overlapping the transformer, which obviously wouldn't be there. The circle is the bulk CO, um, tank that gets filled up, and the other rectangle is the bulk oil. Um, the bulk oil and the bulk CO get both piped into the building, there's no, it's not like the kids coming out there with buckets, and pouring it in, uh, it just gets piped into the building and into the unit. When they get emptied, uh, the service comes, connects right to it, and draws the oil right out of it. So, unlike in the days that there used to be the grease, uh, caddy in the dumpster and everything turned black, you don't have that anymore. This is a box finished, it gets.
He said that big, the, the big square is a transformer?
Yes, the larger square.
The larger square is a transformer.
Is a transformer, existing transformer.
Alright. We have, there's obviously, it's probably gonna be some, uh, some baller protection there also? Some ballers in there.
We could, we could put that in.
I'm, I'm just saying, usually, it's a requirement, has nothing to do with us, it's usually.
I mean, it's all existing.
It's usually has to do with the, uh, the public utility.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can add some, um, but it's all existing conditions.
Right, but the code.
What you're saying is just, you know.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, just include that on the, on the plan, if that's what they're, yeah.
You're right. You can smash right into it.
And the protection of that fryer system, the grease system, how's that, you gonna show us profiles and stuff of what that's gonna look like?
We could show you the touch sheet on it, yes. Uh, you said.
On this plane, that, what is that system for?
Did you say fryer or fire?
Fryer.
Yes.
Yeah.
And how you protect that from automobiles hitting it or whatever?
There's a curb and about eight feet of concrete.
Yeah.
Eight feet of concrete?
From the curb to where the unit is, and you're gonna have to put something around that. Um, because that would almost be like a, you know, an oil spill, but not, not quite the same, I understand. Yes.
Somebody hits that, and don't say it's not.
No, no, no.
Well, this is just, this is just a tanker, it's a tanker, or this is just a piping?
It's a storage tank.
It's a storage tank, okay.
And it has a pump, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
That has to be protected. Yeah, you gotta protect that.
Is there an option to put it in the building, you were talking about earlier? Were you saying inside or outside? Or not really?
Not really, uh, and the CO not really also, because that's also a life safety issue that.
Because you mentioned like it would get maintained more.
So, low level.
Got you, got you, got you.
This is the actual frying grease that gets.
Yeah, it's gotta be, it's gotta be protected with like steel, uh, some kind of concrete.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll press that face to protect both the existing, the existing electrical devices and the.
Right, and, and again, aesthetically pleasing.
Yes.
Yeah.
For those plus. You know what, we'll come back, we'll fence it, we'll fence it in.
White vinyl is what I'd like to see.
No, let's, 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 let me give us some suggestions. No, let's, 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 let me give us some suggestions.
Yeah, well, do you want us to fence in the?
Not chain link though.
The, um, existing, uh, transformer.
Well.
Doesn't have to be fenced, right?
Doesn't have to be fenced in, but it does have to be.
So you're not seeing any of this back there?
His word, oh, if you want, if you want.
Still need to protect it with some form of baller.
That's not, that's not replaced.
So if you're gonna put fencing around here and you got ballers to protect it, that's fine.
Again, uh, one's not replacing the other.
I think if you wanna screen it.
I mean, not compatible at all, as your desire.
I think that's an excellent idea.
It would be preferred with protection and fencing, we'll fence the whole thing. Cause it'll come right to the edge of our new dumpster and back to the building. And it'll be my fault. And I said that, not you, so.
Yeah, I, I think this, yeah, I think if you screen it, if you screen it.
It takes away any issues.
Because it's, again, it's at the, that's at the front of it all, and it's only gonna make the building look that much nicer instead of looking at the, you know, a tank and a.
It's a way question.
Right.
Again, um, not being bad. Try, I wanna get you what you want next time. So it's only one more time.
Samples of the chicken.
That, he better be out of quarantine.
Beverage of choice.
That, he better have to be out of quarantine for it, you don't want me to cook chicken. My wife cooks it good, but not me.
Now, there's not gonna be any, any person outside running around in a yellow outfit, right, with a chicken outfit or anything, or?
I hope not.
Okay.
Me too.
Long ago, uh, some forty years ago, I walked around in a big purple outfit one time. I was grimace at McDonald's. You have no video or?
See that, now you've, now, now, now you've graduated to Popeye's.
No, no video or, uh, photographic proof of that though, so. Um, I don't have to carry, I just have to speak with B and get you the information and time and you'll tell me when I come. Been a pleasure, stay, uh, safe. Hopefully, please go away soon.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay. Yeah.
I see you all the time. Alright. Now. To the end, we got one more. Okay, so our last item on the agenda this evening is the conceptual view for U-Haul moving in storage of Wappinger Falls. Go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Jamie Maves, I'm representing U-Haul.
Hi, I'm Tom Servone, CRO Properties. Thank you for, uh, here, miss.
Okay, welcome. Okay, so I guess we've gotten the, uh, I guess your conceptual plan, um, they provided, I think, uh, we just, we're discussing a little bit earlier, but maybe you wanna kinda go through what your proposal is. Uh, maybe, you know, that will answer some of our questions before we go forward.
Sure, so pretty much what we're proposing is a self-storage and U-Box warehouse, um, as well as the truck, uh, truck twenty-four seven rental truck share. Um, predominantly what we're looking to do is expand our self-storage in the area, um, and as well as our U-Box, uh, facility. So U-Box is a portable storage solution that you see now, um, boxes that, you know, we bring into your house, they load them, we bring them back, ship them anywhere in the world. Um, so that's a growing, uh, market for us, so we're running out of our room, so that's what you see where the warehouse is proposed in the back of the building that we would like to put on, on the property. So it's not, it's a warehouse for our actual U-bboxes. So it would be, it's a storage container that you are able to move, it's a portable one, so it's really, um, adding on to our storage. It's just only U-Haul employees will have access into that warehouse.
Okay, so this would be just for, um.
Just stacking connections in there.
Yeah, just putting the boxes in, so there'd be no customers going in and out of there.
Correct.
Okay. And looks like you're, you're taking down the entire building and rebuilding it as a?
No, so what we, so right now there is the tile company in there, so as far, as long as they had wanted, um, to stay, we would allow them to continue to be a, a tenant of ours. So that pre-existing building we would keep, um, we would like to put an additional building on the property. So we would renovate what is currently there, um, and use it as our showroom for retail sales. Um, and then, so it, it shows that we built it the whole thing out at this point, um, just as a, this is what we generally do in, in any of our storage facilities, wherever we put them up, is we have the showroom and that's what we're looking at. Um, proposed showroom, so that's where that place is, they're building is right now. The DNR area is where the tile company is currently, um, and that's dispatch and receive. So that's just for our employees where we would, um, have, you know, the simple stuff with trucks, light bulbs, stuff like that, um, and our dollies. But while they're there, we wouldn't actually build that out as where we're proposing currently.
You're welcome to stay as long as, as the tile business would like. OTB is since making it for several years now.
Okay.
Correct, so we, we could just, um, renovate that space where they work and use that as our retail sales location right now while the tile company still, um, operates out of where they are currently.
Okay, alright, and then the other.
The proposed self-storage that you see to, um, in the parking lot itself, they have a hundred square foot. What the, that is, is, um, Miller portable storage, so what it is, is outside dry-up storage. As if you, um, have ever been to like the middle hole location or anywhere else, you can drive in and out, drive, put your car right up to like within the garage door, put your stuff in it. These are pre-made, um, buildings, so they're less, um, lower impact, so they just pretty much get dropped. So that's what that is, we wouldn't actually build out those two buildings.
They're temporary?
You can move them, yeah.
They're basically temporary, so they would be, okay.
Yeah.
What's that like, the shipping trailer?
Um, the Millers?
Yes.
Uh, no, it, it looks exactly as if we went in and built an actual building.
Yeah.
They're just kinda put next to one another. So you, I can provide photos of what they actually look like in one of our facilities. You wouldn't know that it wasn't built with the building right next to it.
Yeah, do they sit on, uh, concrete?
Uh, no, they just drop them on.
Right on the blacktop or whatever you have there?
Yeah, so that's, it just would say, we can maintain it exactly the way it is, just they would just come in. Uh, if that's not something that you guys are looking to see, we can remove those, um, specifically. We would like to add it on cause it gives a customer an additional feature. Some of them don't wanna go into a building. They just wanna back up, you know, some, um, we have, uh, people who, you know, put their, uh, their DJ, so they have their stuff in their, that storage, they like to just drive up in and out, never have to go into a building. And it's, you know, in and out within ten fifteen minutes, so.
With COVID and, uh, pretty ill state now.
And then where you see, uh, the equipment shunting, so what we have now is, um, and then even the proposed display area, we have twenty-four seven truck share now. So what, um, any family can do is at any time, twen-, you know, twenty-four hours a day, they can show up and share whatever truck, piece of equipment is there with another family. So if they, um, arrive, they dispatch themselves via their mobile device. There's a live verification agent doing all of that with them, uh, through the computer. And they never once have to see one person, so there are lock boxes in order to get the key, they complete their dispatch, um, and then they would get the key. So that's, there has to be separate spots in order for the car to be pulled out, pulled back in.
So these are U-Haul vehicles, these are, in this specific area, this is?
It would be our, like vans and pickup trucks that we, 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 um, so we would set them up, so they can't, the shunting is the rows. So we, while we're open and operating, we can shunt right out of the, the rows and they just pull out. But in the front, in the display area where we have them, yes, they're on the road for, you know, for visibility for us. But also, what happens is because it's in a specific designated spot, I can, let's say I work till eleven PM, I can show up at eleven thirty and this is what time I needed that van. So now what happens is if it were in that line, it would be more difficult for that customer to be able to get out. So when it's in a spot, they can pull their vehicle out that they're, that they're renting and then put their car in that spot. And then when it comes back, they can just swap it back out.
Okay.
So this is in that front parking lot, close to Route nine?
That's the spot where it says proposed display. So while all of those parking spots are there, that, that, we don't necessarily need to utilize all of those on that front line to take, you know, to take away from the visibility. So I, we didn't, I can see all the line, you know, all the lines on here. We can take, we realistically, realistically could do like five and five if that's really all what the board is looking to see and not that many trucks right on Route nine.
I think that's a lot of U-Haul signs right up there, right on Route nine. I mean, you have enough problem with just putting up one sign on the building. You're gonna have five, you're gonna have ten signs out there on the main road.
Yeah.
In the trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the display, I mean, the display is right along the road, I could see as being an issue, you know, having all the trucks parked out there.
Yeah. Most of them would not be parked up there. Most of them are parked in the equipment shunted wings. So they are.
Still visible from Route nine?
Oh, no, actually, so you're looking to see most of the equipment back.
In the back, basically.
Okay.
That current landscaping is pretty generous on Plant Depot on the frontage.
Yes, yeah, they, they did heavily landscape around their property.
Display for the volume of the road is, it's that back there. But I think it shows good, it's, it obviously is a concept for, for all our benefits to know about.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that if we could limit the amount of display vehicles out, you know, closest to the road, I think that would be.
That's a perfect.
Sufficient, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Cause you don't have trailers and trucks.
Correct, yes.
And they all say U-Haul, I think that's a lot, I don't know, we gotta figure that out so that they're not hidden from plain sight, you know, one truck.
People can see where the safety proceeds, you want, to be in more of a good location.
Especially if you're. And those buildings you're talking about, those little portable buildings, you'd have you wanted them to say U-Haul over it too?
They, um, have a U-Haul sticker on each door that's about this big. Other than that, they're all, it's, they're orange. It has the U-Haul sticker and then it's the, um, unit number. But that's not visible from the road driving by, you wouldn't be able to see it's the sticker.
You gotta get us some literature on those things, so we can see what they look like.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
And how they're, you know, how they settle, what's the safety issue with that?
Just as a, a, a note, um, I don't have the parking calculations in front of me, but I would imagine that even with parking space being used for the temporary buildings and vehicle shunting and the U-Haul vehicle storage, the, the parking requirements are going to plummet compared to what is currently existing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know screening is a, a priority of the board and that if you take a look at those parking calculations, you might be able to reduce the existing parking and add to the screening.
Okay, yeah, we don't need all of the existing parking.
Yes, I think, especially if we start looking at the rear of the building and I guess what's being used for mulch and uh, that kind of storage right now, which I'm sure in the future could be used for the, the same temporary buildings that are in the front. Um, there's a lot of blacktop on the site which could be repurposed.
Correct.
So what about, uh, what about, um, this area here in the back, is that gonna be used for anything?
Um, right now we have, it, we have no use specifically for it.
I mean, I understand, I understand that you want the stuff right up, right up in front, but couldn't, couldn't this stuff be put over here?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, even in the back of the building, there could be room as well, not even using that, um, space.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, honestly.
You know, light it up in the back?
All this stuff all over.
Get other like houses over here?
That's not, it's, but yeah, it does look like a residential neighborhood back there.
It is behind.
Across this.
Yeah, over here is all residential.
But this hedge is very thick, you really don't see what's in there.
What about on the other side of Smithtown Road?
This is an empty lot that this owner owns and the front of it is.
Airgas, who's here, who's here?
And empty.
Okay. I thought Airgas had residential behind it, I thought that was part of the issue.
But it's like here, it's down.
Okay.
And I believe there is a tenant currently in that back property that you were just asking about?
This, there's an empty lot and then there's a house and the house belongs to this owner too.
Where, here?
Mm-hmm, there's somebody in there right now with, uh, he has, uh, storage containers in there.
Yeah, he shouldn't be there.
You're not supposed to be there.
But I mean, I've seen him in there when I've been in.
He is physically there.
It looks like garbage right now, to be quite honest with you, so yeah.
Yeah, the other thing too is, I mean, by moving, if you could move those propos-, the proposed self-storage out in the front back, because I think you may end up having another issue, I'm not a hundred percent sure, and I don't know if you've looked into it, but the, I believe that flood zone that we were just talking about for the Airgas project, I believe is on this property.
We got pulled back from.
Right, doesn't that come, it goes, I know it, it kinda like.
It's south of Airgas, which we put it right here.
It touches the Airgas property and goes south, so. That might, that might be a problem for putting those there in the first place.
Flood plane or, uh, flood plane?
There's a flood plane, yeah. So that, you probably wouldn't be able to put them in a flood plane.
Where the Millers are that we were proposing, that's what you're referring to?
Yeah, your proposed, yes, there's these two sections here that were proposed. You're probably gonna wanna pay attention to where the, the flood plane boundaries are and try to, you know, obviously keep all your storage out of there. They could elevate, yeah, they'd have to elevate it two feet above, whatever flood stage, right, whatever it is, um. I don't think your customers would be too happy if they put them there and we, we get that, you know, that hundred year storm and then it does actually flood. You know, not that it happens often, but.
The, um, other thing is we would propose a three-story building under the thirty-five foot.
The which one, the?
For this building would be three stories.
Or two and a half.
Two and a half, so we would, we would want to see if that would be.
You're talking about for the new building?
Correct, yeah, so for, I know it's two and a half stories right now, we would, we were looking to.
Where would you put the new building?
One, we, here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this is where they are right now.
Yep.
This would be, yeah, completely now.
So our proposal would be for a three-story building, you know, it's two and a half right now, we would stay under that thirty-five foot height requirement. But, and we would need a variance, we kinda wanted to see where, what your guys' thoughts are on that, if it's even something you would consider.
Okay, I mean.
Well, it's a CBA decision.
Right, but based on the, the architecture of the three-story building, it pictures a point of the home.
Yeah, the thirty, I mean, what, the height restrictions, it's, the zoning is thirty-five, correct?
Two and a half stories or thirty-five?
Correct.
Two and a half or thirty-five?
Well, thirty-five, the height is max.
Is maximum, okay.
Two and a half stories is max.
Yeah. But if you, where are, you looking to go, three stories?
Under the thirty-five still.
Under the thirty-five.
Yeah, so instead of just the two and a half, pull three.
So is this basically what you're building flood line?
Uh, so that is our Moe Hope Newburg location, um, there was one colored copy I provided in there, so I wanted you to see the color scheme. So if you notice, you know, our Poughkeepsie facility, um, correct. If you go to the one by IHOP, it's our older color scheme and you'll see the diamonds, the blue wave, we no longer do that. So Middle Hope was a, and I heard all of your, your stuff, so that's why I specifically included that one because that goes with the newer color scheme, you know, neutrals, um, and where we've gone and now where our buildings are going. So I know most likely more of you have driven by Poughkeepsie where is, it doesn't look like that one. So I wanted you guys to see that way we are moving forward with, uh, all of the color schemes we're putting on the buildings. And then the, it would be, it could be more like the, um, storage facility we have in Poughkeepsie, which is next to where Bone Fish is. You can see that was built more recently than the one down the road, so we've been improving and what they look like to make them more pleasing. Um, so, but we are willing to listen to what you guys are saying and requesting in regards to that. We're not married to those colors and, you know, and we'll see what you guys would, would rather see.
You may run into a similar issue as Chick-fil-A had in terms of signage, in terms of the number of signs and the square footage of the signs.
Popeyes?
Yeah, sorry, what did I say?
That's chicken.
You didn't say Popeyes, because that's what I heard.
Yeah, thank you. You knew what I was talking about. But yeah, that, that will be, that will be in the code, that, that's just something to keep an eye on.
Yep, that's fine. I know that middle hope has less signage than most of what our other stores had, and I'm pretty sure that's what we, we ran into. So you'll see different stores with more and less signage, so. Well, that U-Hold, yes, it's right on my W and middle hold. Um, right on the, right by, anybody who's a Mary Dean Dairy Bar is right next to.
Does the existing site have a monument sign, out of curiosity, uh, up by the road?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if I would think it's very tall.
Okay.
So we're looking more for this board, like the monument signs on the, with the stone pillars rather than these.
Big tall ones?
On the pole, yeah, the, above the tree canopy kind of sign.
Not necessarily backlit either, just lit, like from the ground.
Okay.
From above, down to the face of it?
Right, from above, yeah.
You have a lot of scientists that's on that corner, not too much of them tour.
Yeah, it's a pretty straight bit of that road.
Yeah, I don't know, just, I don't know, the architecture, just kind of, because you got, you got a little bit of, you know, you got Lawrence Farms and, the restaurant next door, you know, which is a little, it's not as, this is kind of, this is kind of boxy as compared to those.
You have other designs?
Have you, have you ever presented any other, anything other than just this, this type of design with the box?
No. What are you not interested in, in that shape of the building?
I'm, I'm just throwing at the ideas, I'm just to the rest of the board, because it's just one of those things to, um, we've talked about before with other, you know, other ones, actually was a tractor supply where, um, you know, they came in and everything was all, you know, pretty much a, you know, everything was squared off, you know, boxed off, and then the, um, uh, the store across the street, which is Adams, you know, had more of a, you know, gable ends on the front of the building, you know, giving it a, a little more, you know, to blend into the neighborhood a little better. Just thinking, I, I don't know, to get some ideas out of the rest of the board, if they're comfortable with this.
You have Lawrence Farms right next door, that look.
Yeah.
Which one?
Lawrence Farms.
Okay, gotcha.
Lawrence Farms, which is just to the south of your site.
Are you looking, I'll submit that back as an example.
Yeah, I mean, just to look at what's in the area, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, make it.
I'd also be curious, just, um, I'd be curious about the internal circulation, because I just know that there's gonna be a lot of equipment on the site, both in terms of the trucks that are being stored and serviced, trucks that are being dropped off and picked up, as well as, you know, people bringing in to the temporary structures, their cars right up to it. Just a little bit more information about the internal circulation, where things are going to be stored, vehicle counts, things like that. The parking lot looks good. It's bigger than it needs to be. And I think there's probably some room for, uh, I don't know what I'd describe it as, a little bit of, um, pedestrian protection from vehicles, uh, especially, I guess, customers that might be inexperienced with vehicles of that size. And in proximity to pedestrians coming and going.
Yep, that makes sense.
So just a little bit more information on that would be great. And have you had any thoughts about how the exterior spaces, especially this area around the proposed self-storage, how the exterior of the site is gonna be lit?
Um, more than the pre-existing light, light structures that are already there.
Are you, are you changing the lighting?
Um, that was not currently on anything that we, we were going to propose, no.
Okay, so that's still in the future, that is, and it's subject to change, so that makes sense.
And, and the lighting, we can, will, I heard, I was listening to all of your feedback, so, I mean, where the lighting for us isn't going to make or break it. So if you guys are requesting something, then we can always change that. Lighting for us, you know, we obviously want people to be able to see that it says U-Haul. But what specific light structures you are requesting isn't, isn't gonna be an issue.
Okay.
I mean, we, yeah, I mean, we'd be looking for some lighting details with the full, you know, with a full submission. You know, do you have anybody have anything else?
Architectures on those front sheds or pods, whatever you call them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get all the information on, on those.
Do they link together, those?
Yeah, that would be, ooh, I'm sorry, it would be one, one building. You wouldn't know that that's the way it was built based on looking at it. It will look exactly like, um, my middle hope storage doesn't actually have the outside, but it would look, you go down Route nine and you see any of the outs, the current, uh, storage facilities, Guardian and everything, they have the, the outside storage where you could drive up. It would look just as if it were one big building like that. It's just, that's not, it's not how it happened, how we do it anymore for those.
So you put guardrails and stuff to protect those from the public?
There are, yeah, there are, well, around the aisles and stuff, some places we have ballards so that people, like, people hit, hit them, they cut, cut corners too tight. Some people inexperienced, people who can't drive it, so we do have protections where it's necessary. Some locations I don't, because there's a big enough swing that if you're gonna hit it, you're gonna, your, we're destined to take out the building. It's, you know, people who that same thing, they're going up on sidewalks and stuff, um, but if it's a request, obviously we'll meet it. Does anybody have any other questions in regards to what we're proposing? Anything specific you guys want to see from that, those features of plan?
I think we're, uh, I think, I don't have any other questions. Yeah, no, I guess if you, you know, you want, hopefully you got information out of us to,
Yep.
You know, so you can manipulate this plan into a, you know, into a full site plan. I guess if you resubmit it, then we can go forward from there.
Sure. The only question I have that would prevent, probably would prevent me from coming back is if you guys would be considering giving me the variance for the three stories. Or if that's never gonna happen.
It's not this board. You'd have to go to the zoning board.
Zoning board?
Yeah, zoning board would, for the three-story. I don't know, do they have the ability to go for a variance before they make a submission to us? Because I think, oh, there wouldn't be a referral from us to go to the zoning board?
Yeah, you have to, yeah, they have to initiate here, they have to get referred to the ZBA with, at a maximum C curve. And then they come back here.
Right, so, yeah, because we would be the ones doing secret.
But we would look at the first submission.
For them also.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you would, yeah, so you'd have to submit to us and we'd have to start the process. And while we, you know, while we're doing the review and getting through the secret process, you could start with your application with the zoning board. But then they wouldn't be able to act until we, um, till we pass other, you know, negative declaration for secret. And then they would be able to vote upon your variance at that point in time.
Are there other three-story buildings in the neighboring area?
Um, I'd have to look into it, I'm not sure that.
That would be a great.
We were attempting to do this at a, at a different area and, and where I am and, and there are, so that's, I, but I'm sure I didn't do.
It's important if you can find other three-story buildings.
In that area.
Man, I don't thi, I don't think there is down the mountain.
I don't think of, yeah, I can't think of any off the top of my head.
They're all one, a lot of them are one-story.
That's the village, department building across from Losi. The new one, the river building?
No, the medical building there, or Hachin Gardens building, nine down Mouse Corners.
Oh, that's the one that crossed from the bank, I don't know.
I can't think of any.
So it's a middle block.
The one right next to it.
We've got three levels, it's a, it's a ten.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, nothing on.
There's nothing in that median area.
Yeah, but we're talking, I think we're talking right around this area.
Yeah, I would say.
From the parking lot, it's two-story, and then it gets to third, almost like a basement.
From Route nine.
So that's, that's a little bit.
The elevation on the second building in from air gas, that's, that's fairly high too there.
It's up on a little bit of a, it's up on a hill compared to the other buildings. It is a two-story, it's just on a, on the high point in that landscape, yeah.
And that's what the building down here, we probably measure from the parking lot, it's two-story, but from Route nine, it looks like it's thirty.
So you're, you're on your, it's thirty-five?
I mean, that's gonna be tough for these people over here, they're gonna be all.
That's not our issue, it's not the thirty-five feet, it's getting maximum space and getting, yeah, three levels, so.
Okay, just spread the building out a little bit more and make up the same square footage you got early.
It's usually just not what we, we would rather.
I mean, if the person's still there, I thought that, I thought in the preview you mentioned that they'd clear that out.
Stay it up and not go out, and we would be honestly getting a parking, parking.
I thought that, I thought you said that.
I mean, I can talk to them, it's just usually that's not, not right.
You sprinkle, you have sprinklers through the whole system, right?
Correct, yes.
I guess that would be up to the zoning then to make that decision.
What, I'm sorry?
For the three-story, I mean, that's not our decision for the three-story.
Right now, there's no, this won't worry me, all right?
No.
That would go with the building code, they'd have to sprinkle.
I know, that's, that's a normal thing they do.
So you're gonna have to go put in a tank outside for sprinkler, because there's no water and sewer at the site. That's one of the problems with this particular site, why it hasn't been developed. Needs, you know, like a low water use like U-Hold.
And Malcolm just brought up something, back of that building, you're gonna be seeing from all the residences. So it can't just be a box in the back.
Gotcha, okay.
Keep that in mind, that back needs to look as nice as the front.
And you may want to avoid, uh, the big windows that show off the storage containers?
On the backside?
On the back, because that is gonna contribute, especially with the height, to light.
Correct, yeah, okay.
And light spillage.
And I apologize if you already said it. Do you know if there's still people or businesses in this corner?
The back corner at the mall.
I mean, I've seen people back there. I don't know exactly who they are or what they were doing, because originally that wasn't my concern with the property, you know, people, it just came with it. Um, I can like, I can find out what's going on after.
You have contact with the owner?
Um, I am not.
Who's the representative?
It's gonna be hard to come in if there's all those violations exist and when you're trying to look at the site.
We would clean it up. I don't, yeah, I mean, regardless, it, yeah, if, if, yeah, yes.
Are there any other existing issues that, uh?
That I know of, that corner's a magician.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
And he's aware of it.
It's, it honestly is terrible looking, yeah. That's why I, originally, before I took a look at the site plan and I just was driving by it, I didn't even realize that that came with it, because it.
Feels like a separate lot.
Doesn't, correct, yes, yeah.
Probably looks a lot like a separate lot with the screening that's there.
It's not pretty, so, yeah, I'll, I'll can find out. Anybody else have any questions?
I think we've touched everything, I need to succumb to mine.
But she had said the three-story is like, is that a?
Well, we'll keep moving on, get everything fixed, resubmitted, and then attempt to get your guys' approval to set up a meeting with the zoning board.
Because we gotta have a public meeting too, right?
You'll have two public here, one with the ZBI, you'll have one here. But I don't, I think you're gonna really have to understand the process, you're gonna have to make a full submission. We're not taking part submissions anymore. It's gonna be the whole, all your work needs to be done, and then once the board accepts that, you'll make that first go-round. At that point, and this, our consultants have given you review letters, at that point, you can make an application to the zoning board of appeals. They can hear your, uh, application and they can do the public hearing, but they won't be able to act on it until this board gives you a next deck, if that's where it goes.
Okay.
So it's at your risk.
Yes.
You guys, when you guys go for other sites, you typically hire like professionals to do all your plans and take it through the process?
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
See you, Tom.
Right now.
We've reached the end of the agenda this evening, uh, we get a motion to adjourn. Okay, motion made, second. All favor. Okay, so we're adjourned.